Okay, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the work session of Los Cruces City Council. Today is Monday, September 13th, 2021. It's approximately 1:00 PM. Before we begin, if you please join in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Okay, so now we're going to go to the Pets of the Week, and Jennifer Martinez from our Communications Office is going to introduce them.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I am Jennifer Martinez with the city's Communications Office. And today, we have another two Pets of the Week, and I will begin with our dog. Rusty is a one-year-old male who may start out a little bit shy, but will stick to you like glue once he has warmed up to you. He's probably not a match for people with cats already in the home, but he is okay with other dogs that are his size. And he does like walks, and he enjoys playtime. And then we have Coral. Coral is our Cat of the Week. She's about four months old. She is still young, but that will give her more time to grow and adapt with you. She likes to play, but she can also be a great friend to relax and cuddle with. You can adopt Rusty or Coral. First, go to the ascmv.org website to find their pet number. As you can see, it's right here in the middle of your screen. Coral's is 37260, and Rusty's is 34882. Once you have that number, or choose a different animal and find their animal number, you can call 3820018 to make an appointment. Also this weekend, there are Saturday's Farmer's Market Downtown hours from 9:00 AM to noon. And of course, the Clear the Shelters event continues through Sunday, where all the adoptions are sponsored, and the fees are provided already. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Now we're going to go to the Jobs of the Week. I believe Cindy Quillan will be sharing those with us.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, Mayor Ponson Milburn. Members, my name is Cindy Quillan, and I am the Assistant One-Stop Operator with our New Mexico Workforce Connections Office. For today's Jobs of the Week...
Excuse me, Cindy? Could you mind moving the microphone a little bit closer to you? Because, no.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. So this week's Jobs of the Weeks, we have preschool and kindergarten teachers that are needed with Discovery Child Development. There are three positions available. These positions will be closing on October 1st of 2021. Next, they are needing a yard and warehouse worker with Foxworth Galbraith. This position closes on December 2nd of 2021. Next, we have an operations supervisor with Rest Care. This position closes on November 30th, 2021. We also need merchandisers with Admiral Beverage. These positions will be closing on November 30th of 2021. And we also have need a police service aide with the City of Las Cruces. This position also closes on October 1st of 2021. But for a full list of jobs and openings that we have available, internships, and volunteer opportunities, you can visit us at www.employernm.com or at www.governmentjobs.com/careers/loscruces. And for our local office here in Los Cruces, our location is at 226 South Alameda Boulevard, and our phone number is 575-524-6250. And we are seeing walk-ins at our offices. Thank you very much, and have a wonderful week.
Thank you, Cindy. Okay, so let's go ahead and get started with the work session. We have two items on the agenda. And the first one is going to be Energy Use in Buildings. And I believe Lisa LaRocque is supposed to be presenting. I don't know if I see her. So if not, well, let's go ahead and switch this up and go right to the noise ordinance. It looks like Sergio Ruiz will be making his presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. My name is Sergio Ruiz, Policy Analyst with the City Manager's Office. Today, we will be revisiting the current noise ordinance. So I'm going to begin with an outline of a timeline of different events that have occurred with the noise ordinance. On May 2017, there was an amendment approved on the noise ordinance. September 2018, Bohannon Houston produced a noise study, or began a noise study. February 2019, the noise study was completed by Bohannon Houston. June 2019, a public input meeting was arranged, and there was a public meeting to gather the public input. And June 2019, a council work session was also related to the noise ordinance. And on April 2020, which is now, the noise study of our supplemental was actually completed as well. It was a follow-up to the noise study, the original noise study. And now we are here, September 2021, revisiting the noise ordinance. Our current noise ordinance is, you can find that in chapters 19-121 through 19-135. The current ordinance states that it is prohibited any noise, or make, or continue, or cause to be made any loud or unusual noise which either annoys, disturbs, injures, or endangers the comfort, repulse, health, peace, or safety of others. Also, if loud or unusual noise is audible by any person or police officer at a distance of 30 or more feet from the source. The current ordinance includes some of these items as being in violation, or items that can lead to a violation of a noise ordinance: horns and signaling devices, radios and phonographs, loudspeakers and amplifiers, yelling, shouting, any noise that is done near schools, courts, churches, hospitals, pounding of hammering or metals. And this one's pretty popular, is mufflers and exhaust devices. Also, construction, repair, demolition work that is not authorized, limitations on the volume of sound emanating from vehicular sound amplification systems or vehicles. There can be penalties regarding the violation of noise ordinances. It's a minimum of $100, and up to $500, or 90 days in jail. There are temporary permits that the city can issue. If somebody wants to get a permit, if they're going to have some sort of event or party that's issued here at the city, then there's an application that has to be submitted for that. Any other violations or additional remedies or injunctions can be added to what the current violations of the ordinance. The current ordinance issues that we're having is that the current ordinance is subjective. There's no decibel levels. They're not mentioned or defined within the noise ordinance, and they are very difficult to enforce. Complaints, there's been 737 noise complaint calls between March and September of this year, 2021. The primary source of noise complaints within the City of Las Cruces is motorist noise, usually modified exhaust and from loud music. It is difficult to enforce this sort of violation since the vehicles are not stationary. The secondary source of noise complaints is live entertainment slash music. Also, what we have is a couple of noise complaints a month regarding UTVs being noisy, or producing noise pollution. The noise study, done by Bohannon Houston, determines that the existing noise levels within the city, or is determining that the existing noise levels within the city support a decision-making approach to an acceptable level of noise based on decibels. There were 20 noise measurement sites that were selected within the city to include residential, commercial, parks, and industrial zones. This noise study was conducted between November and December of 2018. There was a 15-minute sampling periods between morning and afternoons, and on weekends, at commercial facilities that involve light music or other noise generating activities. Here's a decibel scale, just so we can gauge some of the decibel noises or noise pollutions that can affect all of us around our environment. If you can see, at the bottom is zero. It starts with zero. It's the threshold of human hearing. That's your basic hearing. Breathing is up to 10 decibels. A quiet room would be 20 decibels. Whisper, light snoring would be 30. Moderate snoring would be 40. Conversation, somebody talking would be 50. A busy street, an alarm clock would be up to 60 decibels. A hair dryer or a noisy restaurant can go up to 70 decibels. A loud radio can be up to 80 decibels. A bass drum, up to 90. A subway train can be up to 100 decibels. Industrial noise up to 110 and 120 for a jet plane taking off. The maximum could be a gunshot and a metal concert, about to 130 decibels. Anything in the red is a maximum, as you can see there. The noise measurement options, in April 2020, Bohannon Houston provided the city with a supplemental report to the original noise study. The supplemental report offered the following noise measurements options for both public and private properties. These are the following noise measurement options. One, public or private property option, to measure the noise from 25 feet from the noise source. And as you can see, there's going to be some illustrations of what Bohannon Houston used on their supplemental study. And this, again, public or private property option. Second option, private, private property only. It would be measured, and this would be measured at the property line, excuse me, of the noise source. The other alternative to that would be at the property line or within the property boundary, up to 25 feet from noise source. Or 25 feet from the property line of noise source. For commercial noise, commercial property option number three would be within 25 feet of the residential structure nearest to the noise source located in the different zone type. I'm just giving you a minute, so you can see the illustration. The recommendations by Bohannon Houston are based on the findings of the supplemental analysis. One would be measurement of noise levels should be primarily taken at a distance associated with the source of the sound. Measurements should not be taken on private property. Measurements of commercial establishments should be taken outside and not within the structure. This is a chart right here that compares the city against federal noise guidelines. The federal noise guidelines were derived from the Federal Highway Administration. So we can see here the locations, residential, commercial, parks, and industrial, and the time of the day, or during the day of which the measurements were taken. The first one, if you can see here, the residential on a weekday. The federal guideline versus city guidelines. 67 decibels versus 65 decibels on the city. Commercial, 72 decibels as opposed to 59 on the city. Park, 67. The information for the city was not concluded on this study regarding parks. Industrial, 72 decibels, city 63. On the weekday evening, as you can see, the same. 67 and 65, 67 and 68, 67, 57, and 67. And then the information was not conclusive. On the weekends, the federal guidelines was 67 versus city 64. Commercial, 72 decibels, 63, 67, and then not applicable. The information was not conclusive. And finally, industrial, 72, and city not conclusive. And then we go to weekend or evenings. Federal guidelines establish 67 decibels, city 64 decibels. Commercial, 72 decibels, city 69. 67 federal on parks, and then 56 in city. And finally, industrial, 72 decibels, and then 61 on city. And as you can see, it's separated into, like I said, the location, the day of the week, or weekday, weekday evenings, weekend, and then weekday, weekend evenings as well. All readings are done in decibels. This other comparison is the comparison of the noise study, the original noise study and the supplemental study. It's broken up into the zone type, and also the daytime and nighttime measurements. As you can see, on residential, on the original study, was 67 decibels that were recommended, and the supplemental was 60 decibels. On commercial, I'm going through daytime, so... Does that make any sense? Okay. On the commercial, 72 decibels. And the supplemental, they're recommending 65 decibels. Industrial, 72 decibels. And supplemental, 65 decibels. And during the nighttime, 67 decibels with the original study. Supplemental, 60 decibels. And there's a range that varies here on the nighttime with the original, they're recommending between 67 and 72 decibels on the original study. The supplemental is recommending 60 to 65 decibels. And finally, industrial, 67 decibels to 72 decibels, and the supplemental is 60 to 65. The study recommended some goals and objectives that the city can approach. Number one, the first goal would be a defined approach on when to enforce the city noise ordinance. The objectives here for this goal would be to develop criteria for when code enforcement measurements are done. Provide clear expectations around acceptable noise levels, and provide clarity for both city staff and city residents on the process for addressing noise complaints. Second goal was an internal city protocol for how to collect noise measurements. The objective was to obtain an accurate noise measurement device, provide appropriate training to city staff on collecting noise measurements, and to include cautionary information about the unreliability of measuring noise using smartphones and similar devices. Finally, the final goal would be to determine where noise measurements will be taken under implementation of the city noise ordinance. And our objective would be to collect measurements at the site of noise generation, and then compare it to baseline noise levels with those of that same zoning or land use type. The proposed changes by the study is to amend the existing noise ordinance to include the following provisions: Adopt specific decibel level measures recommended by the Bohannon Houston study, one being 67 decibels for residential, and 72 decibels for commercial. Again, the decibel levels are established by the Federal Highway Administration guidelines, or are compared to the Federal Highway Administration guidelines. Proposed changes continued is to noise, the noise measurements taken by the following approach: It should be measured at a distance of at least 25 feet from a noise source located within the public right-of-way. And if the noise source is located on private property or public property other than the public right-of-way, the noise should be measured at the property line of the noise source. Another proposed change would be to purchase noise decibel meters. They run about $300, or average about $300 per device, and there's a cost of $150 for calibration of the devices per gear. The police department has recommended that purchasing a total of 10 noise decibel meters would be sufficient. And with that, I open the floor to questions.
Thanks, Sergio. And before I get to the council, I just wanted to say, just remind you all, in my opinion, what brought this to the forefront was about three years or so ago, there was a restaurant that was having some outdoor events. And the way the old, or I guess it may be currently written, but was that a resident who lived about almost a mile away, although they couldn't hear it, knew that this was going on and was reporting them. And so the people around there ironically didn't seem to have a problem with it. And the one who reported it, I think it was like nine tenths of a mile away, couldn't hear it either, but knew what was going on, and still called codes on them. And so that's what brought this to the forefront. So I just wanted to share that with you. So that's why, me personally, I support where it says where you measure where the source of the sound is coming, as opposed to the property line. So, okay. Mayor Potem, and then Counselor Sorg, I believe.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Sergio, for the presentation. I'm really glad that we're talking about this. In the last couple of years, I've received, I don't know why I took this off, sorry. I've received numerous noise complaints specific to the original townsite in the downtown. And so I was really interested in seeing what Bohannon Houston would come back with, and then this supplemental. Mayor, some of the issues that we're experiencing is specific to loud music, you know, in the evening hours, sometimes during the weekdays into the weekends, so much that they would be in violation of this 25 feet, you know, from, for example, in the downtown all the way into the Pioneer Park area. They're hearing the music and foul language that make it really difficult. And I've had numerous residents call with, you know, concerns about the noise related to, you know, I have to work in the morning. These are the issues and concerns that I have especially. And they're near schools, so school, churches, you know, that whole thing. And then, some of it is during the day, specific to the Pioneer Park or the Alameda Historic District from a commercial company that receives the storage units full of grain and the pounding of those storage containers because the grain is stuck. And I know that codes has been very, very busy in and out of there in trying to balance, you know, those issues. And so, again, I'm for the decibels. I think that's a really important component. And I especially want to ensure that law enforcement, to include codes, has the necessary tools to ensure that they are, you know, that they have that to be able to determine if, you know, there's inappropriate noise. But I'm especially concerned about the vacancies that codes has in police. So I wanted to hear from our IC Sergeant McCord and Deputy Chief out in the audience. So I'd like to hear from them. You know, 700-plus for the amount of time and complaints is quite high for us. And it's obviously something that we have to address. And then, lastly, I do want to say that I get a lot of complaints about UTVs and the car mufflers and those things from really every area in my district, every area in my district. So this is very necessary, and again, very happy that it's come to council again. So, I don't know, DC Danes or Sergeant McCord? Just, yeah, I would like for them to address the issue of enforcement and vacancies and the kind of thing that, you know, we need to be aware of before we put, you know, all those unintended consequences, if you will.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor, Mayor Potem, Goddard, City Council. Deputy Chief Danes, for the record. We are in the middle of filling our vacancies. As a matter of fact, we just went through a hiring process, so we're doing background checks and stuff. So hopefully, that will be fully staffed. There are some things that you have to understand, too, is what is noise to one person is something to someone else. Now, I'm not talking about banging or anything like that, but just for example, you know, if it's one type of music versus another. So we have to be cognizant of those things. And 25 feet is about the distance from me to Counselor Ben Coleman. So it's, we have to also be cognizant of that. So as far as the equipment and stuff, this would be a misdemeanor offense, which means it has to be observed or heard in this particular aspect of it, in the presence of the officer. Okay? So a lot of times with the UTVs and the cars and things, believe it or not, those are actually stock. So we have to also be careful. And some of the motorcycles and stuff, that's just the way they are. So they're going to exceed the decibel rating automatically. And we don't have a way to check whether something is stock or modified. So that's another thing to consider. Also, we are going to ask for voluntary compliance. This is not something that we really want to get into. A lot of heavy enforcement, heavy-handed enforcement in certain areas. So we're going to ask for voluntary compliance as well. So with the equipment, when I came up with that number, it was more for, to equip our codes officers and keep a couple on patrol because right now, a noise violation is probably not a high-priority call for LCPD at this point. So it would be a codes-related matter. Where it is going to become a little difficult is in the evenings, when you have some of the stuff that we're talking about. We don't have codes out that late, so it would come over to law enforcement. So, but I will assure you that we're going to ask for voluntary compliance initially. That's what we do with any, anything. We try to get that. So we get a loud party call, or, hey, excuse me, can you turn down your music for us? You know, your neighbors are complaining, or someone's complaining. And normally, 95% of the time, we'll get compliance at that point, so we do not have to issue a citation. If it's an ongoing issue, then obviously, it will work its way through the court system. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you, Deputy Chief Danes. I appreciate all of that. So with that said, then, Sergio, what are your thoughts around the special permit or the permit? Would that continue to be a part of this ordinance? Is that what you're recommending as well? That folks that are going to have, be it public or private, right, this inordinate amount of noise, that they would get a permit? Well, I'm calling the special use permit. That's not what you put on the slide. But, and if I remember, that needs to go and approve by chief, correct?
Mayor, Mayor Potem, Goddard. The permit, it's already on the noise ordinance. It can actually be issued by the city from 7:00 AM to 12:00 midnight. So that's something that's already been established.
So are you saying that it would continue to be a part of... So are you, are you saying that it would continue to be a part of this particular ordinance?
Yeah, it would. It's already in the ordinance, I would say yes.
Okay, and this is for special occasions, and is that defined as part of the?
It's not defined entirely. I think it would need to be revised and maybe made, some changes made to it. But yeah, I think, as I said, it doesn't explain exactly what kind of events fall under this temporary permit. So I think that would need to be revised and maybe some information added on to that.
Sure. So Sergio, along with that, is there a requirement to go around and get sort of a poll from neighbors about this special event?
Mayor, Mayor Potem, Goddard. That was a recommendation that was done by Codes, yes, that maybe the community can gather with some of the city councils and get their input on that. That was a recommendation from Codes, again.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Sergio. And then lastly, the areas that I've get the most concern about are property that's leased from the city and/or near places like museums that the city own. And so, City Manager Peely, I'm hoping that we can have some discussions specifically about noise barriers, things of that sort that I think are really important, especially when we're trying to build what we're trying, right, what we're trying to do there in the downtown and bringing housing to the area. This will be an issue. And so I, I'm really wanting for us to look at sound barriers placed very specifically in those areas. You know, I worry about even our museum employees because it, specific to the banging from that storage container with grain. Now, it doesn't happen consistently every day, but you start to hear the noise be a problem early spring, you know, throughout, throughout the, you know, throughout the hot summer months, and then it sort of tapers off into the fall, the fall months. But, and I think it's been particularly an issue during COVID because everybody was home during that time. But it, you know, I just feel necessary to say that out loud and advocate for my, my community that's feeling like they're plagued with this kind of noise. And so I'm happy to speak offline with you about these places as well, so I don't call them out in public, but I felt I need to say that. And with that, Mayor, those are all my questions and concerns and comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Counselor Sorg and then Counselor Flotus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Sergio, for all this work. Could you go back to the slide that shows those, I don't know if you called them complaints There. You had seven hundred and thirty-seven noise complaints calls. Okay. How many of those actually had a citation? And in particular, I'm thinking of vehicles like cars and pickup trucks.
Yes, Mayor, Counselor Sorg, I would defer that question to Codes.
Yes. Well, I mean, would Codes be putting out citations for a hot truck that's louder than everything going down the street? No. I think the police would be doing that, wouldn't they?
Mayor, Counselor Sorg, City Council.
Yes?
Can you hear me, sir?
Yes.
Okay. Again, like I stated earlier, these violations have to occur in the presence of the officer, and they're also dispatched, so if they come in through 911, through a priority system. So I would say probably ninety-five percent of those calls, by the time we arrive, the noise is either abated or the vehicle has not, is no longer around. So I would probably say ninety-five percent of them have not gotten citations. Most of the time when we cite vehicles, the officer, I want to say sees and hears the vehicle because we have to be, it has to be in our presence, and then we will make a, an appropriate traffic stop or make contact with that, the violator. Again, we were also trying to have voluntary compliance, so if they're like, hey, I'm sorry, I didn't realize it was, hey, can you please turn it down for us? So a citation probably isn't always the most practical thing to do. We'll probably give them a written or verbal warning at this point.
Okay. So you're saying about ninety-five percent of those seven hundred and thirty-seven noise complaints? Or what?
Probably were not cited, Counselor. Could you ask me specifically, not all of those seven hundred and thirty-seven are vehicles?
Right.
Those are loud parties or banging and, you know, there's stuff that Codes deals with.
Yeah, I understand. How many of those complaints would be vehicles, do you think?
Counselor, I don't have that with me. I can provide that for you, sir, but I did not, I do not have that with me today. I do apologize. But in, in explaining that, most of the time when they come in, if they come in through central dispatch, they are prioritized. It's kind of a lower priority call, so most of the time.
But if an officer hears this loud vehicle going down the street and he stops him?
Correct.
And, okay, gives a warning?
Yes.
There'll be a record of that warning, so the next time he gets stopped, there might be some action done, maybe?
That is correct, Counselor Sorg, yes, that was correct. If they were written, if they were issued either a traffic citation or a written warning. If the officer chose to give them a verbal warning, it would not necessarily be able to be trackable.
Yeah. I wonder how many officers would rather just do the verbal?
I cannot say, sir.
I would encourage them to do a written one, myself, but that's, that's your job. So yeah, I get a lot of complaints of noise, but it's almost all vehicles.
Correct.
Yeah, and of course, a lot of it is the off-road vehicles too. Much of that is that. But I actually see a lot of it on Elk's Drive, or I should say, here.
Yes, Counselor.
But anyway, okay, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Counselor, if I could just tell you one more thing. Also, it is very frustrating with us as vehicles as well, but many of these vehicles do come with stock, which is from the factory, which we're probably gonna, wouldn't surprise me if they would exceed your decibel limit. And again, we don't have any way of saying, is that stock? Is that not stock? And being able to take action on that as well, not just UTVs, but motorcycles and vehicles as well. So just another consideration, diesel trucks.
Motorcycles are that way too. I had one guy complaining about a guy who started his motorcycle at the same time every morning. It was quite early and he was really annoyed.
Yes. But we also need to think about commercial motor vehicles as well, even city, city vehicles. That's, it's a possibility.
Commercial vehicles are noisy.
Like diesel trucks, things of that nature, so.
I don't hear much of that. It's mostly just big pickup trucks.
Right.
And small, little hot cars. Yes.
Right. But it's, I think we might should consider.
I would encourage a little bit more warnings, some written-up warnings. Yeah, that's what I'd like to see a little bit more of. But that's a call that you have to make. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Now, DC Danes, do you mind, Counselor Flotus, can I ask Deputy Chief a couple questions because she's just keep going back and forth?
I need my steps, Mr. Mayor. That's, I'm good.
So let me ask you something, Deputy Chief. So the catalytic converter was required in all vehicles after nineteen seventy-five. So I happen to know on pretty good authority that, that when, especially the younger and older, but primarily younger, when they're modifying their vehicles and they put what they call headers, or they put what they call glass, you know, different type of glass packs or mufflers, they don't put the catalytic converter back on. You just, you just don't do that, right? They're running without that. So my question is this, if you get a complaint that someone has a loud vehicle, and let's just say hypothetically, you go over to their home, because let's say you've gotten numerous complaints on one particular. Do they, could you ask them to start up that car and see whether or not it has a glass, glass pack, a muffler, something that, that really? I guess my question, what I'm thinking is, I wonder if the city should institute a requirement of catalytic converters, unless you can prove it was stolen, because I know those are hot commodity, on vehicles. Because really, once you have it on there, it was meant for a purpose, and that's to keep the emissions down. And now, and like I said, they started in nineteen seventy-five. Now, if it's before nineteen seventy-five, well, you know, you're not going to really go find one to put one on there. But would that make things a little bit easier for you? If we had an ordinance that required, if we could do that, I don't know, I gotta check with our lawyer, but if we could do that, and then, that, because if you have a nineteen eighty Corvette that should have had a catalytic converter, and you took it off because you put, wanted to put headers, you wanted to put glass pack mufflers or something to make it sound really loud, could you do it that way?
Mr. Mayor, City Council, as far as emissions control, that would probably help control that as well, which I know that Burnley County has emission standards, just specifically. So that would probably be the initial way to go through with it. As far as asking someone to turn on their vehicle, I can ask, but if they refuse, that's the end of it at that point.
Okay, but if we had that, that ordinance, that you need to have the catalytic converter because of emissions?
Right.
But then also, you know, the vehicle's really not supposed to be modified unless, you know?
I would probably have to ask motor vehicle and stuff, specifically what the catalytic converter laws are, Mr. Mayor. We don't, we don't really enforce that, so I'm not really up on the motor vehicle code regarding that specific thing. We, there is a loud exhaust ordinance that's part of the noise ordinance, but I cannot say whether it's a catalytic converter or a glass pack. Obviously, it's loud and we would take action on it, but to say what it is, or then how would we be certified to say that is a properly working catalytic converter? It kind of can, it can lead down another rabbit hole, but I'm sure it's something that we can look into, Mr. Mayor.
Well, just thought I'd throw that out there for my colleagues here, and I have to tell you that when I was younger, I used to probably have some cars that, you know, so I'm a little familiar with that, yeah. Counselor Flotus, you had, you are next. Thank you, DC Danes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Could I ask one quick question?
No.
Do you know if catalytic converters are required to be on cars nowadays?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
They must be.
Yeah, exactly. Unless you get it stolen, but, you know, that's the emissions.
Okay. Okay, good.
Okay. Counselor Flotus?
Yes. Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. In California, there's a requirement to do smog checks, I think, once a year. I can't remember anymore. It's been a while since I've been there, but, and I don't know if it's a state regulated, you know, regulation, but I do know that they check for catalytic converters because they do smog emission tests, and if you fail, you can't get your tag on your license plate. Or there's some connection there with the Department of Motor Vehicles. But, you know, the enforcement is going to be very, very difficult because of the, I don't think that we're going to have, I think, ten of those decibel reading apparatus, apparatus will be, have been requested. It doesn't mean they're going to be given to the police department. It isn't a case of ask and ye shall receive. It's a case of ask and then maybe ask again, and maybe you'll get it, maybe not. So, and I'm sure that every police officer or Codes enforcement person, I mean, first of all, we're not going to have the, the human resources to really be enforcing it. We just aren't. The other is that how can a police officer say it's a speeding, loud motorcycle or whatever? How is that officer going to say, yes, I was within the twenty-five feet? And, you know, by the time he stops the car, it's, I mean, I don't know. I think enforcement's going to be really difficult. And I think that twenty-five feet, because I was thinking twenty-five feet, and I too thought, that's just like the distance between me and the front row right there. So I, I just don't see how someone can be having a live band and not be bothering people. It just seems a little bit too much of a Gestapo state sort of thing to me. You know, I'm just wondering how that's really going to affect our community. I understand when there's a lot of loud banging or maybe some industrial type thing going on near a residence after quiet hours. I think quiet time is between seven AM and ten PM or something like that, or maybe even earlier than ten PM. At any rate, I just don't see how the enforcement's going to be possible at all, at all. And it's not to say that the study shows this, that, and the other, that certainly justifies measuring noise and having, and having a, an ordinance. But I just don't know, the twenty-five feet, is that what Bohannon Houston noise study recommended, twenty-five feet?
Mayor, Counselor Flotus, yes, that's what the study Bohannon Houston did, they recommended the twenty-five feet.
Wow. So that's, I mean, say, say there was a band here, and say, say we were at a park, like yesterday, you know, at the, what is it, monuments, what was it, monuments to?
Monuments to Main Street.
Oh, thank you, yeah. How soon I forget. I mean, we had beautiful mariachi music going on, and I was, you know, as I was driving towards a park, I could hear it, and it was beautiful, in my humble opinion. Other people may have thought it was just some, you know, noisy noise or something. So those are my concerns. And it's not to say that it isn't needed, and it'd be wonderful if each police officer had a decibel measuring device so that he or she is able to measure that and catch the person right away. But I don't think, I mean, I just, I think I see, you know, we have a lot of laws and we have a lot of ordinances and that sort of stuff, and some of them are just not, it isn't practicable, you know, and, so I, and I'm very happy that we did the study, but I do have, and I do recognize that these decibel levels are by the federal guidelines, but I'm just, I'm just wondering how this compares to other municipalities that have this sort of a statute, what the success rate is, and, and how, as far, okay, so we had the seven hundred and thirty-seven noise complaints between March and September of this year, but they were complaints and nothing was measured, right? Yeah. So it could have been, I mean, I have a constituent, and I just sent the email over to the powers that be here in the city. And the powers that be are not the city council necessarily, by the way, to, for them to look at the situation where there's a tenant whose landlord refuses to fix a noise, a noise that's even, it's loud and it's vibrating and his quiet enjoyment isn't being, he isn't able to enjoy. So I, I'm just wondering what, what we're going to do with this.
Yes, Mayor, and Counselor Flotus. On the supplement and the study itself, I had emailed that last week, there is a comparison of different municipalities in that study versus Las Cruces, so that information is in the study.
Okay, so there, and these are apples-to-apples, apples-to-apples comparisons, and so far is the cities being comprised of the same objective data that we have, such as population number in the police force, yada, yada?
Mayor, Counselor Flotus, the comparisons are different. Some of the cities are a little bit bigger than Las Cruces, Albuquerque being one, Seattle being another, so it varies. The information's going to vary compared to Las Cruces.
Yeah, so it's not necessarily apples-to-apples.
That's right.
Thank you very much for your presentation, Mr. Dries. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Ben Colman?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you so much, Sergio and DC Danes, for the information. I appreciated your telling me this is twenty-five feet. I'm terrible at conceptualizing distances. The other day, I read an article about a sinkhole that was the length of seventeen washing machines, and I was like, oh. machines, and I was like, oh, I get that. But if you tell me 25 feet, I'm like, yeah, that means nothing to me. So I appreciate, I appreciate that. I don't mean to make light of sinkholes, of course. So, just so that I understand, Sergio, I would be out of compliance with this resolution if outside of the, if I had, I was having a noisy party, and you were outside the 25, and it still sounded like a loud hairdryer. Is that right? Oh, I say hairdryer because that's at 70 decibels.
Let me, yes, Mayor, Counselor Bencomo, here's a decibel scale. So, yes, a hairdryer would be at 70 decibels.
So is that right? Is that, if I was, if you were outside of that 25, and it still sounded as loud as a hairdryer, I would be out of compliance?
Mayor, Counselor Bencomo, according to the study, yes.
Okay. So then, for commercial, which is at 72 decibels, the proposal, I think where I'm having a difficult time with this is for downtown area, that we're trying to have a lively downtown, right? That's full of businesses and a lot of bars and places where young and old people hang out, right, especially on the weekends. But there's also a lot of people who choose to live in the downtown area, right? Like, people really want that livability. What's, what is that balance like in areas like downtown, given that someone could live within the 20, well, no, I guess, that would be crazy if you lived within the 25 feet. That's a pretty short distance. But people live pretty close to places like the Amador Live, that it's the place where I personally receive the most noise complaints. How do we have, what's that balance like?
Mayor, Counselor Bencomo, this is, this is a study that recommends the decibel levels and the distance. Now, the city of Las Cruces and yourself, the city councils, can actually establish something different. We could get together with codes and see what would be the most appropriate distances and decibel levels that they may think that's the best to measure these distances and decibel levels. This is not set in stone, so the city can actually change that according to whatever is deemed necessary, or is deemed by codes as, as a correct distance or appropriate distance, and also decibel levels.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I mean, I definitely, I'm, I'm very interested particularly in finding the balance for downtown, again, because you know the reasons why, right? And I just, I'm just really curious about then, the enforcement of this, and how we can, I continue to get complaints about several bars downtown, even though codes repeatedly checks in with them. And I, I agree with the voluntary participation, right? I, the less tickets we have out there, the less criminalization of things we have out there, the better. And so I think it's important that codes and LCPD is working on that system. But at what, I do think, at what point do we then say that something's got to give, and something's got to change, right? Those are my only issues with, or not issues, I just, somewhat of unclarity for me. The meters that you're proposing, we purchased for LCPD, how do those work?
Mayor, Counselor Bencomo, I would defer that question to Chief, Deputy Chief Danes.
Mayor, Counselor Bencomo, I'm going to be completely honest with you. I don't know.
Oh, okay.
I'm assuming, I'm making some assumptions from what I do know, and Mr. Nichols can help me out, that they're going to work something similar to a radar. Obviously, it'd probably be a sonar, and they do have to be calibrated, but honestly, I've never even put hands on one. So maybe Mr. Nichols would be able to help me out, but honestly, I don't know.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Larry Nichols, Community Development. I would like to answer you, Counselor Bencomo, in this regard. I had quite a bit of experience with this in my previous job. Here would be a good example. We had a, a neighborhood pub that was permitted, and they went in business, and they had an outdoor patio with speakers. There was an alleyway, and right next was a residence. We got continuous complaints about that situation of the music and the young crowd, or old crowd, all of us that went there, wanted to listen to the music. We had a lot of complaints, so we went and purchased the decibel meters, the professional grade. We would go, the police department would drive by from their vehicle, probably a little greater than 25 feet, probably more like 30 to 40, they would measure the decibel. They would find it was in plus or minus 3% or 5% of the allowed decibel rating, and they would go on, because there wasn't a violation. The neighbor would still complain. His bedroom window was like 25 or alley width away from the sound. I'm going to submit to the mayor and city manager and city council that Las Cruces does not have a noise ordinance issue. We saw on the tables there that they recommended decibel levels from the federal government, and what was being proposed by Bohannon-Houston. I was part of that study with them, and they found that the percentages of, of a level of separation between what is recommended and what is being measured is, I think they were like, one example was 63 or 4, and it was, you know, 60 or 62. And they did these measurements at different times of the day. They had 20 different locations in the city, and they found that the separation of the, of the sound nuisance ordinance didn't really violate that much. Now, we had 700 and some complaints. We get them as well as you do. But if we went and measured those, we would probably find, with a decibel meter, we would probably find they were not out of compliance, or very close to being, maybe there's a few minor decibels over that. So, the 25 foot, I would have to submit to you, that's much too close. You know, it needs to be a greater distance than that. I know that's what was recommended. Bohannon-Houston said we can make amendments and lower the decibel ratings to a few percent. The police department will purchase these items. They'll measure. If the decibel rating is over 10% or 15, then citation probably should be issued. You can get decibel readings on your cellphone. They're not, they're not, and this is what the pub owner did. He got an application, and the officer went by and said, we have a decibel rating here of 78. He took out his cellphone, measuring, says, well, mine says 64. Now, the cellphones aren't calibrated like the professional grade, but the point is this, we're going to find when it comes time to enforce, we're going to have these disputes between people measuring with devices towards, and who's going to prevail. Well, we should prevail, but it's going to become problematic for us. It's one of these situations, I believe, that if you have an ordinance, you have to be prepared to enforce it.
Right.
Or, or not. But we're going to enforce it if we have it. It's going to be a difficult one.
Thanks, Larry. Can I ask you another question, since you're up here? I'm curious, and I'm not suggesting this, I don't know, but I'm curious what it would look like to have different distances for different places in town? So that it's not one size fits all, because it potentially doesn't, right? And so, what would that, is that something that exists in other areas, where there's a greater distance for the measurement of the noise in certain parts of town, like a downtown?
Yes, Mayor, Counselor Bencomo, the distance is an item that I think could be utilized. Let's take an example here. What about, what about an Aggie football game at the stadium? Does that sound carry to neighborhoods? Yes, it does. How would we be able to monitor, control, or enforce, ask the fans, maybe not to cheer as much for the home team? But the distance is...
There's not a lot of cheering going on now, anyway.
But you bring a good point, Counselor, that the distance is, you know, obviously, the further away you're from the source, the more diminishing there is. You ask about, and I kind of waffled on a little bit here, but you ask about, how do you measure these devices? They're, they're professionally grade devices. They have a meter on them. You press the meter, it gives you a feedback. Digitally, it tells you it's at this level, and then you can show that to, to the owner and make judgments from there.
Thanks, Larry. I appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, DC.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Bencomo, Resta Council. Obviously, I also want to clarify, if we are issued these, we'll make sure we're trained on them properly and using them. Another thing, too, is something to think about, is to allude to Mr. Nichols' comment, it sounds loud at the time, and then let's say the song changes, and then now it's a ballad, or it's something else. You're going to have those issues as well. So, we would measure the noise at the time we were there. So, there could be some other issues as well, but I promise we'll be trained and they'll be certified, Council.
Thank you. I have no doubt, DC Danes, thank you. One of my last questions is around, much like we have an urban heat island map, we have all these different kinds of mappings for the city, do, is there a map for like hot zones of noisier areas in the city?
Mayor, Counselor Bencomo, yes, supplement has maps involved, and also the actual study. The actual study had maps. But, excuse me, I actually have big maps that are in my office, if you want to come by and see them, that actually show every hotspot of how, of the intensity of the noise in certain areas of the city. But I don't know, I know there was some maps on there, but if, if you would like to come by my office, I can show you the big maps where it actually shows the, all the hotspots.
Thank you, Sergio. I appreciate that, and I'm on the supplemental right now, and I don't see a map, but yes, I will take you up on that. But I also just think it's important for this to be on, in a public place, that map for communities. But I would like to see it, just to figure out if there are, do we approach this in a tailored way for different parts of the city? Obviously, industrial zones in the city, which a lot of them are district for, right? Like, that could be really different than other parts. And so I, I just think this deserves further look into, and, and like I said, perhaps not at a one-size-fits-all approach. But I do, you know, but I do think it's worth a deeper conversations with members, with residents who live in the downtown area, and businesses in the downtown area, because that's, besides car noise at Legends West that I hear a lot about, most of the noise complaints that I get are about downtown businesses with loud music. So I think it's worth conversation with community members, the downtown partnership, that kind of thing. That's it for me, Mayor, thank you.
Mayor and Counselor Bencomo, if I may. I'm going to see if there's any way to, I'm not sure if there's on the computer, if I have anything on there. If not, I'll try and find that, any way that I can find those original maps, so we can get the shorter version, actually, and pass it out to all the city councils, so they can look at that. I'll, I'll take a look at that, look into that, see if that's possible.
Before I get to Counselor Abate the Stuvi, just to give you a little bit of reference, the best I can tell, the closest houses, east of the Amador, is 1,000 feet, and those along Campo. To the west, along Alameda, is 1,250 feet. So, 25 feet, I mean, that's like, that's nothing. So, I don't think, if I did see any complaints, very rarely did I see from the Alameda side. It was more on the Campo side, and those are even far a few between. You get a lot from Alameda?
No, Mayor, I get, and even if you, that's even more concerning that you say that's the furthest house, because from people that would say, I don't mind music, I like to hear music or whatnot, but that it is excessive noise often.
So, I don't know what's concerning, but 1,250, that's, that's still kind of, that's like, almost a quarter of a mile, and they can still hear, because of course, sound carries and travels, so. Counselor Abate the Stuvi.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you. I think a few of the items I have actually just got touched upon. One of them was looking at a specific map. I know all of our districts have nuances. I, of course, have NMSU to consider, and three, what, two high schools and a bunch of other elementary schools, which unfortunately, I do every once in a while get complaints from, kids being too noisy on the playground. Or, we do have banned practices. See, I do get issues with banned practices. So I think if we proceed, just making sure that we're including maybe some of those partners to, to make sure that we're getting that voice and perspective, because I think there are lots of things that happen, and they're right in the community, especially with the schools that are right next door to houses.
Thank you, Counselor. So, let me just share something with you that I think you are experiencing, that, something that I did years ago, when we tried to put through a noise ordinance, is exactly what you're saying. It seems like if we were to try to regulate it, there are, and you mentioned a good, some good ones there, Counselor, whether it's the children playing in the playground, or banned practice, I mean, these are things that are normal, everyday things that happen, that they just do. But if we go and start passing ordinance, that we have to do this, then we have to really, we can't just pick and choose who we're going to put this ordinance with. We have to do them all or none. So that's why, in my, I would, I would like, and I did look it up, the Lamborghinis have catalytic converters, the Ferraris have catalytic, the Corvettes, they all do. So they are, are supercharged, but they do have catalytic converters. I think, maybe if you all agree, to at least let legal look at whether or not we can do something on catalytic converters. So I think that's the way to go, because if they don't have a catalytic converter, they took it off for a reason, so they can put on some glass pack mufflers, headers, modify it such to not only go faster, but to sound a lot louder. Because that's really, when you get right down to it, if we can eliminate a lot of that noise, I think at least half of our problem has been eliminated. And then, once we get the service, police service aides and a few others to go after the UTVs, then, you know, that's another, that's another opportunity. But I would, I would at least let us take a look and see if that could give LCPD something to, if they, if they get, they find a vehicle that's, and I would say 1980, because from 75 to 80, not all the car manufacturers put them on, they were supposed to, but there was a few that didn't. And then you don't see too many 1975 or 76 cars. You see a few, but I would, I would think that it would be safe from all 1980 till now, they're supposed to have a catalytic converter, and if they didn't, they took it off for a reason. Yes, Counselor Swart?
Yeah, I was just going to say, Mr. Mayor, thank you. In 10, 20, or few more years, we won't have to worry about this anyway, because all the vehicles are going to be electric.
That would be nice, but I'm sure there's still going to be a few that are, I mean, look at, I mean, yeah, there's a lot of cars that are still around, especially if you have a 50s or 60s, those classics, they're not going to make those electric, at least, but those would be exempt, because it would be after, say, 1980, and now you need to have a catalytic converter. So is that, personally, I don't, I probably wouldn't move on putting through this noise ordinance, but maybe circle back and have legal take a look and see if there's something in that nature. Is that, is that okay? Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Sergio, can you, or do you recall from the public comment opportunities, what the comments were, what kind of concerns and that arose from that?
Mayor, Mayor Protem Gander, yes. A lot of the concerns from the community were some of the establishments, or restaurant establishments that produce music in the downtown area, as well as, like I mentioned here on my, on the PowerPoint, is noisy cars. So those two were the main... two were the main factors for community concerns. So, that's where, that's where this came about again, is that mainly a lot of the music coming out of the downtown establishments, or commercial establishments.
Thank you, Sergio. Was that face-to-face or in a survey?
That was face-to-face, yes.
Okay, okay. Mayor and Mr. Pele, I see Chris Vaver in the audience, and not that I want to put him on the spot, but we have these conversations every time we meet related to that. And I agree with Counselor Ben Como that it's not a one shoe fits all, but it's certainly something that we have to strike a balance. I don't think the 25 feet is the most appropriate in terms of, you know, distance, if you will. But I also, in reading the information from the noise study, I was actually concerned about where they were looking at noise, the time of day that they were looking at noise, because it, in some, in some ways, it just didn't fit sort of the complaints and such that we were getting. It certainly wouldn't have been the areas that I would have selected to check on noise, right, and then put it in a study, if you will, so that we, so that we're looking at it. So, I do have major concern tabling this, because, again, weeks do not go by, that I hear, I'm hearing complaints weekly, sometimes, you know, three, four, five times complaining about, about that. And I don't think it's folks that, you know, don't like music, or don't want any kind of sound, or anything of that sort. It's, I think it's people who feel like we need to strike a balance, and we don't feel like our neighbors are being good stewards, right, neighborly, if you will. And so, I feel strongly that I'm happy to agree to having legal check around, you know, the emission standards and the catalytic converter situation. But I really believe that this noise ordinance needs to be in place. The one that we have currently is not working. And I'd like to recommend that Mr. Pele, you know, get somebody to help law enforcement look through that data. For us to not have the specific, you know, the specifics in terms of those calls, and how many tickets they're issuing is difficult. And, you know, I don't want to fly blindly either, and I realize there's some unattended consequences to something like this. So, again, I'm recommending that it go either to the Public Safety Committee, the Quality of Life Committee, some PRC, so that we can really look at this moving forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Counselor Ben Como, you have a-
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I think that's a great point. Mayor Protem, I should probably go back to a PRC. I do have maybe one last recommendation as well, because according to what D.C. Danes said, right, that the officer would have to be present in order to enforce it. So, making it also very explicit that it's stationary noise, right? If it's not stationary, that is nearly impossible then to enforce, right? The issues at Legends West where people are racing, and waking up people in the middle of the night, isn't necessarily a noise issue. It's a racing issue, right? There's something else going on. We're about to have a brand-new street down to Shiro, right? Like, that's, that's a problem that needs to be resolved separately, because I don't necessarily think that's a noise enforcement issue. But does this proposition include language around stationary noise? Sergio?
Mayor, Mayor Protem Ben Como, it's, there's too much, there's not enough details that are in the, in the ordinance currently, so I would say no.
Okay. Yes, I think this needs further discussion before it comes back to council, for sure. Thanks, Mayor.
Thanks, Counselor. Sergio, can you put that list back up again with the different decibels? I just found something kind of interesting. I was thinking if we were to do a maximum-
The decibel scale?
Yeah, there you go. So, apparently, Deep Purple, which is a rock band, I don't think they're still around.
I love Deep Purple.
They played at, in London once at 117 decibels. Three audience members fell unconscious because it was too loud. So, I'm thinking, if anything, we just put a maximum of, like, I don't know, 90. So, that's, that's between a bass drum and a subway train. 117 is pretty loud. Three of them fell unconscious. So, anyway, just something to think about. But so, we'll just go ahead and let legal take a look and see what they can come up with, so. But like I told you, we had a hard time years ago trying to do something because of all these different things, just so many things that just come up. And I appreciate, Counselor, your different examples, because they are. These are just everyday, normal occurrences that happen in our lives, you know, where the children playing, or bands practicing, or sometimes jets flying over. You know, it's just, but, but yeah, I think 117 decibels, that would be pretty loud. Okay, well, thank you, Sergio. We appreciate you very much. Okay, so, next, we're going to go back to the energy use in building. Oh, I'm sorry, there was-
You have a comment on public comment?
We don't normally allow public comment, but I'll go ahead and do this. How many are here to speak on the noise ordinance? Just one, two, two people? Okay, let's have three minutes each, and just state your name, please.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask a question about that graph, that with the decibels on there. I imagine that was measured pretty close to the source there, at least 25 feet, if not closer, yeah.
What, I'm sorry, what are you referring to?
The measurement of these sounds-
Oh, yeah.
Were pretty close to-
Probably think so.
Source, yeah.
Okay, so, we're going to allow you three minutes, and thank you, Sergio. Just need you to state your name, please.
Yeah. My name is Jim Wilcox, and I live in Counselor Ben Como's ward. And thank you, Mayor and Council, for this time to speak. I'm also the New Mexico representative for Noise Free America, and Noise Free America provides consulting with municipalities to help develop legal, fair, and enforceable noise ordinances by looking at all the other ones across the United States. It's a great resource for helping to develop a workable noise ordinance. And I also am here to focus primarily on vehicle noise. I sent you a, an outline of the challenges around understanding what causes irritation related to noise. It's not just decibels. So, while the study was a good study, its scope was pretty narrow. It just looked at a very narrow slice of what noise is all about. So, what I'm looking at here is primarily illegal installs of mufflers. And I have spoken to three different businesses downtown who say they do have a concern about the noise from illegal mufflers. And I went out to a muffler shop and spoke to the muffler owner, and he claims he's not installing them, though some people differ with that. He's interested in working out in an agreement, so that he gets credit for not installing illegal mufflers. He gets notice saying, "I pledge not to do these illegal installs." A lot of installs are also done in a garage, though, but those can be identified, I think, at least in a number of ways. One is motorcycles. There were three gentlemen downtown recently, and I walked up to them, and I thought they had illegal installs. And I said, "Hey, where'd you get those? Those are great bikes, by the way. Where'd you get the mufflers? Are those stock?" "No, they're not stock." So, I took a picture of it, looked it up. It's not legally, street legal. So, I don't know the challenges that code would have, more than what I just did, but that's what I did. And the other option is to use some sort of a mirror, or a phone with a recording, video recording. I've taken pictures underneath my car to show to the mechanic. You just, you can look at that, like you said, the catalytic converters, you can look at that and see whether or not that's actually illegal, or, you know, missing a catalytic converter. So, I think that decibels are useful, but mostly for things that are happening at night, and you're trying to enforce late-night noise. But for cars and vehicles, other vehicles, I think it should be something physical. You can say, "This has been changed." I looked up, Albuquerque's got a problem with this. They mentioned that you're not allowed to install those kind of mufflers that are not stock, that violate, basically, federal law. So, my recommendations are that you focus on the mufflers, and the other recommendations are time of day for that kind of noise, and that you establish a committee, or send it to another committee to look at it more fully. And I'm available should you wish to use my resources.
Thank you, Mr. Wilcox.
Thank you.
And it was my understanding that most, almost every muffler shop that I can recall years ago, they're not allowed to put on the glass pack mufflers. But it's really not that difficult. I don't know about today's car, but, you know, cars in the 70s and 80s aren't, really weren't that hard to take off.
As for experience.
For experience. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. For the record, I'm Peter Goodman. Surprised you again with my appearance, I'm sure. I'm not as concerned about vehicles. I'm concerned about the Amador Live, because I do live not that far from it. I'm not within 25 feet, obviously. But I'll tell you what my experience and my thoughts have been. Our experience, and not so much recently, obviously, we've had the COVID-19 and other factors. But parts of our house vibrate from the music, and I can hear it in my bedroom when I'm trying to go to sleep. And I don't, you know, aside from whatever decibels we're talking about, if I can hear somebody's music from that far away in my bedroom, even when I've got a fan on for white noise, I'm not going to sleep, and I'm furious. And I'll tell you what I think at those times, is I think, you know, if these guys have some exception, I'm going to find out who was on the council, like Mayor Miyagashima, and I'm going up his house at 2:00 or 2:30, and I'm going to blast something on a megaphone for a while and see how he likes it. Nothing personal, obviously, but that's how angry I am. And one time I went over there, it happened to be obscene music. I couldn't care less about the content. But I went over, and I made my way to the door, and the person who seemed to be in charge came to the door. And I wanted to be angry at him, but I couldn't, because he was saying, "Yeah, I wish we could. They won't let us turn it down. It's crazy." And it was crazy. If you were within 25 feet, it was, I'm sure, to the point where it would do physical harm to your ears. I was thinking I might get arrested for animal abuse, having walked my dog in that direction. And if they have some kind of exception, I hope we can get rid of it. I think it's something you need to think about. It's not, I mean, I can hear trains from my house. Doesn't matter. I learned to sleep with those. They go by. It's short, it's loud. It's not saying words, which kind of commands your attention in a way that some blank noise doesn't. So, I sure hope you can take care of it. I mean, I'll be watching and trying to comment as the process goes on. But whatever the decibels, you know, you were talking about, won't work. So, I do hope you will take that seriously and address it, and I thank you for your time.
Thanks, Peter. And you're right, it's the first time I've ever seen you with a tie, so you caught me, you caught me off-guard here.
I'll see what I can do next time.
And short hair, Peter. There you go. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, again, thank you, Sergio. And next, we're going to hear from Lisa LaRocque on the energy use in buildings. Now, Lisa, were we going to have a video?
Yes.
Okay, first?
Yes.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, City Manager. This, I'm Lisa LaRocque. I'm the Sustainability Officer for the city. We had a visitor, we had Senator Heinrich come and visit us last week, and he's prepared a short message to you all, so I'm going to start with that. And then, after that, Jenny Hernandez, our new Sustainability Specialist, will take over with a presentation.
Hi, everyone. I want to thank you for inviting me to share a few words on the importance of electrification as a primary pathway for climate action. Widespread electrification is one of the surest climate actions that we can and should take right now. That means many of the devices we use every day that currently burn fossil fuels, from furnaces to water heaters to cars, can be replaced with electric alternatives when they reach the end of their service life. We need to accelerate the electrification of these machines in our households, in our buildings, in our businesses. And we need to avoid locking in decades of pollution by choosing fossil technology. In addition, all of these new electrified machines need to be powered by clean and carbon pollution-free energy, which we can also generate right here in New Mexico. This isn't some futuristic solution. This is about implementing the solutions that we already know exist right now. This is a real and proven way for us to meet our carbon emission requirements quickly enough to prevent the worst effects of a warming planet. It will also save taxpayers money by investing in electric infrastructure that has lower annual operating costs. I'm really proud of all the leadership that Las Cruces has already shown on this front. You're transitioning your vehicle fleet to electric vehicles, and you're calling for a phase-out of the use of natural gas by the city-owned Las Cruces Utilities. These are all steps in the right direction. I hope that today's session will help you think through even more impactful steps that can be taken. Las Cruces can show the nation what it looks like to electrify new and existing city buildings. You can build more electric vehicle charging infrastructure, and you can adopt new codes and initiatives to encourage electrification of residential and commercial buildings in the community. You can lead the way in demonstrating how local communities can meet the central challenge of our time, and your local leadership will, which inspires me as I keep fighting for climate action at the federal and global levels. I'm proud to lead the effort in the Senate to advance this vision of widespread electrification. I introduced the Electrifying America's Future Resolution earlier this year to lay out a policy roadmap for widespread electrification, and the decarbonizing of our entire power generation sector. Just last month, I introduced the Zero Emissions Homes Act to establish rebates that will make clean electrified appliances affordable and accessible to all Americans. And I continue to fight for policies that will help New Mexico build a thriving, clean energy future, while also making sure that New Mexicans are not left behind by the transition away from fossil fuels. All of these climate priorities can and should be included in the broader infrastructure and climate bills that we're continuing to negotiate in Washington. As that process plays out in both the House and the Senate, I'm going to do everything I can to get them across the finish line and onto President Biden's desk. We don't have any time to waste on climate. The extreme weather events, heat waves, droughts, wildfires will only continue to worsen unless we take significant action right now. And our actions can create a cleaner, healthier environment, and good-paying careers in the building trades. This is our moment to act. Let's not waste it.
Hi, good afternoon, Council, Mayor, City Manager. For the record, my name is Jenny Hernandez. I'm the Sustainability Specialist. It's nice to meet some of you for the first time. Let me go ahead and open the presentation. Great. So, as Senator Heinrich discussed, we're going to focus on actions that the city can take to net zero. And so, first, I'll be starting off by defining what net zero is, why it's so important, and the actions that city council can specifically take to help us make that transition. So, first, what is net zero? Net zero is an- Net zero is an effort to meet a building's energy demands using renewable energy. However, it's further enhanced when we include sustainable components and take a holistic approach to this. And so sometimes, people often think that if we place solar on it, we're ready to go, right? But we need to make sure that we're incorporating other sustainable practices that can really make sure we're maximizing our energy efficiency. And so some of these are optimizing the shape and orientation of our building. So this just means using the sun and wind to naturally cool and heat our buildings. And when we do this effectively, we have the potential to save up to 65% in energy savings. Another component is using high-efficiency mechanical systems. And these are examples like heat pumps versus traditional HVAC systems. And this has the potential to save us up to 45% in energy savings. Another component is selecting efficient appliances and/or electrifying. And think of these as like our washing machines and dishwashers. And this has the ability to save us 37% in energy cost savings. And then designing a high-performance envelope. So this just means making sure that we're sealing our buildings tight by using a high, using an insulation with a high R value to make sure it's efficient and none of that heating and cooling capacity is getting leaked out. And then after we do all of these components, then we can offset the rest of the energy we'd need with renewable energy, such as solar. And so why is net zero important? So as we've seen, climate change is worsening. And some of these extreme weather events are having impacts on our low to moderate communities disproportionately versus other parts of our community. And so what's happening is there is a lack of policies and directives that holistically address these disparities. So then this population is having to make tough economic choices and distress purchases. So when we talk about tough economic choices, specifically, our low to moderate income population is 42% and/or more is cost burden up to 20%, which means that they use 20% of their overall income goes to rent and utilities, and sometimes even more than 20%. And so what happens is sometimes they have to make distressed purchases, which means that in the case of an emergency or in a situation where one of their systems breaks down, they don't have the financial capacity and/or the time to research and invest in a higher-efficiency mechanical system. And so then they're locking themselves into 10 to 12 years of an inefficient system that runs on dirty fuel. And then what's happening is our housing programs are lacking resilient priorities in terms of being able to meet some of these needs. And so it's creating this cyclical cycle. And so how can we break this cycle? So I'm going to discuss four specific actions that we can take to help address breaking this cycle. And so two of them, it's a delicate balance between policy and technology. And the first one under policy is bold actions. And this really just means for us to commit to taking a holistic approach to this and identifying projects that we can use to exemplify net zero. And another portion of policy is influencing these practices, so really supporting policies that will drive the change for us. And in terms of technology, it's supporting the electrification transition. So again, making sure that we're using more efficient mechanical system versus inefficient ones, and then making sure that we're ready for this transition. So sometimes we need to make sure that the infrastructure is there to support these technological things that we're recommending. And all of this has to do with equity. So we need to make sure that in each step, it's an equitable transition so that nobody in our community gets left behind. And so I'm going to talk about each of these in detail and give some examples. And the first one is readiness. So again, preparing for the transition. If we're going to be proposing some of these technologies, we need to make sure that the infrastructure is there so it has the capacity to provide the energy needs that it's going to require. And so this includes pushing forward design standards that move us toward electrification, such as solar EV chargers. And again, making sure that infrastructure is there with greater amperage. So an example of this is Council actually had the forethought to do this on our parking garage with the solar. Sometimes we can't necessarily put that renewable energy in immediately in the start of construction. So if we put in the wiring and tubing beforehand, when we're ready to go back and install that renewable energy, it's a seamless transition. It saves us money. And it's a little bit less stressful versus trying to go back and manipulate the infrastructure after the fact. And so the same thing with EV chargers. And specifically with this one, a lot of our newer residential homes don't have, I'm sorry, a lot of our old residential homes don't have the capacity to have electric chargers. And so it's just the forethought of making sure that all of our new homes has the panel capacity to be able to have those chargers at home. And so with that being said, a way that we can help prepare for readiness is influencing practices and policies and incentives to drive the change. So New Mexico State just adopted the 2018 International Energy Conservation Codes. However, these codes don't include electric and EV readiness. So what we can do is amend that adoption, or I'm sorry, amend that 2018 IECC codes to include electrification and EV readiness. And then to coincide with that, we can encourage our builders to build efficiency energy buildings so that they can qualify for some of the rebates that exist, like the Sustainability Building Tax Credit. And we'll go into more detail on this on the next slide. But we've seen that the only economically feasible way for this transition to be successful is if we do it in a holistic approach. So this means bundling our rebates. And it'll make the transition economically viable. And so we need to take bold directions. And when we talk about bold directions, this is again, just committing to having a comprehensive approach to this and including all the aspects we discussed in that first slide before putting in renewable energy. And so Council can do this by identifying certain projects that can act as model developments that exemplify a net transition, a net zero transition. And so, for example, some of these projects below serve as great opportunities for this, like our East Lomond, the West Industrial Park, Bases Verdes. And then just making sure that our new construction and city-owned and sponsored buildings, like our public housing, follow a net zero design standard. And then specifically within these projects, we want to make sure that we're optimizing these buildings. And so when we talk about optimization, I'm referring again to that first slide. Just making sure that we're having a tight envelope so that our energy isn't leaking out and that we're using the building shape to utilize the natural elements to our benefit. So take, for example, here in Council, in our City Hall, I'm sorry, the buildings, the hallways are naturally lit with sunlight, right? So we did that so we could utilize the natural sunlight. And then in terms of exterior, we can also include certain elements, like increasing our sheet, our tree shade canopy, and incorporating green infrastructure. Another example is outside our council chambers, our green infrastructure project with the Palo Verdes. If you walk out there during the summer and walk under the trees, you can notice the difference in that ambient temperature versus when you're away from those trees. And this actually helps us address an equity issue as well with our urban heat island effect. We've done studies before showing that the infill area has a higher urban heat island effect, which is predominantly low to moderate income versus other areas of our city. And then that directly correlates to cost burden, right? These people are running their air conditioner more, trying to stay cooler, and their systems are typically inefficient, so it's a higher cost burden for them. And so this also connects with our electrification transition, which is just replacing our older inefficient systems like HVACs with heat pumps, air source water heaters, and electrify all our appliances. A recent study conducted in Denver, through their Energize Denver Renewable Heating and Cooling Plan, found that heat pumps are actually four times more efficient than a traditional HVAC system. And we do recognize that there are still some barriers with this technology. You know, the most, the biggest one of concern is that it is more of an upfront cost, right? And so in order to eliminate one of these barriers, we have to place resiliency and this transition center stage. And when we do this, we can also provide thermal comfort in our extreme weather events, such as heat. We can reduce that cost burden. We're increasing resiliency for our frontline communities. And we're strengthening the workforce, as Senator Heinrich said, that we have the opportunity to do. And we've seen through our research that if we offer a comprehensive retrofit, again, including all those aspects in the first slide, we're able to qualify for some local, state, and federal rebates, that amount up to $7,765. And then with Senator Heinrich's bill that he was discussing in his video, if we couple those two together, there's an additional $6,600 that we can qualify. And just to be clear, his bill does have the maximum amount of $14,000. However, $4,000 are specifically set aside for panel upgrades, which if you recall the readiness slide, again, some of those older houses don't have the capacity to have EV chargers. And so that's what he's talking about, upgrading their panels to withhold that kind of new technology. And so we found that by taking a holistic approach to this, it's the only way that we can have an equitable and economically feasible transition. So here you'll see three scenarios. The blocks in the yellow are what qualifies under each rebate. And so in the first scenario, if you do a holistic approach, it's an initial investment of $8,500. However, with the coupled rebates, you have a payback period of zero years. So this is including, again, some local, state, and federal, plus Senator Heinrich's bill. Now in scenario two and three, it's a piecemeal. It's doing things separately and only qualifying for certain rebates depending on what you're applying for. And so you have one federal and then the bill from Senator Heinrich. And this is a 14-year payback period. And then finally, in scenario three, we only have you qualifying for one federal rebate, and it's a payback period of 31 years. So in this slide, there are two really important components that we're seeing, is one, that we absolutely have to take a holistic approach to this, right? If we want it to be economically viable, it has to be a comprehensive approach. Because when we do a piecemeal in scenario two and three, those payback periods of 14 years and 31 years are just super unrealistic, especially for LMI communities. And so in closing, why does net zero work? It offers several benefits of equity and health, including safety. We're building a safer community, not only for the environment, but for our LMI communities and everyone in general, in terms of the technology is cleaner inside their homes. We're reducing cost burden, we're providing thermal comfort. And in terms of economics, we saw that when we take a holistic approach, the rebates can actually give us a path that's realistic and feasible. And we're creating resiliency. And then in terms of the environment, we are prepared for more of these extreme weather events that are sure to come. And obviously, we all know that it's a critical issue globally, but we've seen that play out this year a lot with our extreme heat in Portland to the flash floodings in Germany that we've seen. And then recently, their IPCC report came out, which, you know, said that the climate crisis is no longer something we can expect in the future. It's here, and it's now, and we're living through it. And so we have, we're at a crossroads, right? We have a very limited time to change things and turn things around for our future generations, but we have that opportunity to do it now. And so the only logical solution is to start to make this transition to net zero. And so with that, I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Jenny. Counselor Sorek?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, let me begin by saying Senator Heinrich really said it all. What he is saying is important. And I, I hope he can get these incentives passed in the Congress. And I think President Biden, of course, will sign them. But I also want to tell everybody that I've lived in four all-electric homes in my lifetime. My father built one in 1952. And he built two more in the 60s and early 70s. And I built my own in Montana, a total electric house. The only other energy source I had was a wood-burned furnace. And being up in Minnesota and eastern Montana, we did not have what we have today, these efficiency appliances. So it was important to have a little supplemental heating in the wintertime, as you can imagine. But we have energy-efficient appliances, energy-efficient furnaces, and air conditioners, and water heaters. And so this is something that we can do today. I'm going to, I'm going to do a little nitpicking because it's, because I want to. And that is using the terms renewable energy. Yes, solar and wind are definitely renewable energies. But so is ethanol. Ethanol is made from corn or from sugarcane, depending where you are in the world. And, but it's not carbon-free. Ethanol, to produce it, you have to use a lot of carbon energy. And as well as the ethanol burns, it puts carbon dioxide in the air. So I like to use the term carbon-free or something akin to that to describe this kind of electrification. So before I go on to something else here, I want to make a comment on our natural gas system in this city. I've gotten an email or two that's, has gotten the wrong impression that they thought their natural gas service supply was going to be taken away from them. And that's not true at all. The Utilities Department is doing a natural gas case, of course, but we're not going to take natural gas away from those who have it now. We're just not going to try, we're trying not to have any new customers or expand the natural gas service or system to the city. So that means that all new city buildings should be electrified. And as the way, pardon me, but I didn't catch your name again?
Jenny.
Jenny?
Yes.
J-E-N-N-Y?
Correct.
Oh, good, I can spell it even. Jenny, as the way you described it was perfect, exactly how we can do this. And so all new city buildings should be total electric. That's what we used to like to call it back in the 60s and 70s, a total electric building or total electric house. And so that there's no other energy source used in these buildings. And then I want to go beyond that. I want to have our building codes, Mr. Larry? Have our building codes so that new houses are roughed in, that's what we call it when you have all the wiring for solar, for electric vehicles, for electric water heaters and air conditioners and electric ranges and so forth. It's all wired in there. So all you have to do is plug and play. You plug in your car, you plug in the solar, you plug in your furnace and so forth. So I want to see that that comes to true, comes to true, come to happen in the very near future, too. The sooner we do it, the better. For the obvious reasons, because the main reason we're doing all this is because of climate change. And we all know the climate change is getting worse and worse each year, or the effects of it, I should say. And we need to do things as fast as we can. So I'm going to ask the city staff whether, what kind of legislation do we need in order to do all this stuff? Do we need just a resolution? Or do we want an ordinance, actually, to say all this stuff? Or do we want an ordinance actually to say all this stuff? So if that's, whatever the case it may be, I hope we can get one drafted up pretty quickly so that we can take it up in the next month or so. And, Mr. Mayor, I think that's all I have to comment on. I might have more to say later. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? So, oh yes, Councilor Binko.
Thanks, Mayor. And thank you so much, Jenny and Lisa, for your presentation and all the work you do. I was very honored to be at the meeting last week with Senator Heinrich. And I always say this, but I feel very lucky to have someone like the two of you at the City of Las Cruces because I think you're brilliant. Or as Senator Heinrich said, "energy nerds", which, which I think is true. And I should be the highest of compliments, Lisa and Jenny. And I think you two are brilliant and I'm very, very grateful for you. I don't have much of a question more, just comments. I think even in our TSI PRC meeting last week or the week before, a developer even mentioned how much more affordable it is to build net-zero homes than it is to build, continue to build subdivisions that have gas hookups, right? He mentioned it was significantly cheaper and so, for the development. And so we really have to take those things into account. And I do think we should put, move towards putting something in an ordinance that is well thought out. And I don't have to say it because you all have an eye on equity. And, you know, I think everything we do moving forward has to have an anti-poverty lens. And climate change is here. And it will disproportionately impact low-income families, low-income people, people of color. And so whatever we do must have a very, very specific equity lens in it to ensure that, you know, low-income folks aren't stuck with a outdated gas system in 20, 30 years, right? And I think those are all really important conversations. Lisa, at our last utilities board meeting, I suggested that you be present at the next work session that we have around the gas rate. I think it's incredibly important that you be there. But I do, I look forward to how we can clarify this, how we can put this towards an actual ordinance for the community. I don't know if it's a two-month thing, Counselor Sorg, but I do think that we have the right folks on the TSI PRC to be able to move something forward. And I really hope that we, even, you know, affordable housing projects that we have like Paseos Verdes, oh, I thought Natalie was here, or anything that we move forward to has a commitment to net zero, especially because of the kind of, you know, communities we're hoping to serve. So, thank you, Mayor. Oh, one last thing. I do think there should be also incentives specifically for developers who want to build in the infill area because, again, like I said, a developer said they're already sort of moving towards that, but there are new developments outside of the city limits. And the infill is where we really need to build new developments, affordable developments, that ensure don't cause a greater energy burden on low-income families. Thank you.
So before I get to Mayor Potem, I think she had her hand up. So Counselor Binkomo, you are aware there are still, there are some incentives right now for the infill? Like, I don't think they charge for the building permits. Certain things they don't charge to try to encourage the construction of that, of those areas. I don't think we can waive the impact fees. I don't believe we're allowed to do that. But I think, for the most part, they have quite a few. And I think a lot of times they just, sometimes when you see builders, some of them are doing it for an investment to kind of like flip the property. And so they'll go with what's moving, what area is moving. And I think the long-term investor will use the infill for property that they may want to hold for 10, 15, 20 years. Mayor Potem?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jenny and Lisa, for your presentation. Welcome, Jenny. I was like, wow, Lisa has help, right? This is so awesome. We're growing. And I think that's awesome to see. So, welcome. I'm glad to meet you. Yeah, thank you to my colleagues for the comments, Counselor Sorg. I was like, okay, when you talked about in a holistic way, where you're speaking my language, right? As a social worker, right? And, you know, anti-poverty measures. So I'm really looking for very specific ordinances that we can look at. And maybe some comparisons to other municipalities our size would be really helpful. And maybe bringing in Setheel, our policy analyst, right, to help with all that would be, would be, for me, you know, that's, a newbie to this. I have great, I'm in awe of you and respect for the, for the energy nerds that you are. I wish I could be one. And I'm trying to educate myself as quickly, right, as I can to, so that I could be one day an energy nerd. I don't know if I'll make it there, but, but I'm, I'm, thank you, thank you. I'm really learning. But so, I'd like to see Heinrich's bill. That would be helpful to me. I want to encourage as much collaboration and coordination with our utilities, especially because of that graph, the potential gas rate hike. I think those are really important. I often feel like we work in our silos. And at this point, we cannot, right? I like, and I think it's important to say that we need a transition plan from being a utilities, right, to an energy utility. To me, that's really important. I'd like to see a timeframe in terms of hiring a consultant to really look through that. I hear over time, and I see Delilah in the, in the, in the audience, and I appreciate her work on this. I know it can't be easy. But I also feel like we need a plan about how we're gonna move folks, you know, from a utility into an energy utility, right? Because we hire specific to that, to natural gas. So it must be very scary, right, to be in those situations and feel like, my goodness, are we gonna have a job, you know, moving forward? So those transition plans for me are really important. And then you mentioned working with public housing. And I would really like to see, because I understand that our Housing Authority has been in the works assessing and moving to complete renovation or rehab of the, of their housing. And I think this has to be at the forefront, the dialogue. And if there's any incentives that we can do to assist, it's something that I think we really need to consider. I know that they're gonna start, and I'm not sure if they're gonna receive ARPA funding or how the city's HUD, and Natalie is connected to all that, but we certainly should be speaking to that. I know that they're gonna prioritize which sections or housing sections should be first. And of course, I always advocate for the one, the tres altas, that's close to my home. But I wonder if there's discussion and dialogue, Lisa, about, you know, those sort of interim, interim, what do I want to say, like, protocols or, that we can do until they get to the point of where they're gonna do a complete rehab? Have those conversations been had?
Mayor, Mayor Potem, Gandera, Lisa LaRocque, for the record, Sustainability Officer. One of the things that we have looked at in terms of, from the Sustainability Office, is we both, we've looked at a gap analysis of where services are not doing that holistic approach. And have, and recognize that weatherization programs and other retrofit programs, not including the HUD program that the city does, are ones that don't really address the impacts that climate change is going to present upon it. So our conclusion is that we need to reframe the way that these programs are done and bundle them together. So I think, as you all were mentioning before, the idea of having more collaboration amongst several parties is important because this sort of, taking advantage of the funding that's going to come through these rebate programs, we have to have this be scalable in order for having a major impact in a larger part of the LMI community. So that's gonna be developing a workforce. That's going to be finding a funding stream to front the money that is used during those rebates. And supporting the development of a workforce program is gonna take coordination amongst different communities. So I see this as a significant step that we have to take. And it isn't any single entity. It's gonna be a lot of different players on this. So I agree with you that those things have to be taking place. We wanted to provide the evidence that it's doable financially and that these are deficit, or just omissions that are happening with the gaps that we see in the current programs. Again, not including the HUD program in the city, although their program doesn't, isn't able to address more than, you know, 10 to 15 houses a year. And we need to be like at a scale of 500 to 1,000 houses a year. So those are the concerns that I have is how do we, how do we really mobilize this group?
I really appreciate that, Lisa. I appreciate it. Thank you for those comments. I, you made mention in one of the slides, areas that you have interest in, that in terms of like your, heat indexing that you've been working on and such. And so I would recommend that we really incorporate other areas of, in the city. I know that just the limitations in your capacity of being one has been, right? Exactly. It's been difficult. It's been difficult to do. But I would recommend that we identify in each one of our districts, areas, you know, those hot zones, those, and a plan of action, right, to address those. You know, when you spoke of tree canopies and beautification, but not only as a, as a way to reduce, you know, the heat. I think about the area that I live in specifically. And I mentioned tres altas. I mean, over time, it has changed in terms of the kind of tree canopies and just different things that they have. And I'd really like to see, at least as an initial, right, opportunity is really working with them on, you know, planting more trees and assisting in that, in that wage, not only for beautification, but for that, that, you know, for reducing heat, heat islands and such. So I want to see more of what you're doing and at different levels or different areas in our city. I think that's gonna be important. And I really appreciate the gap analysis. I think that's also an important thing that we, that we need to know. So I think I've addressed all my, all my questions and comments. So thank you both. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Sorg? Oh, and then Counselor Flores and Counselor Sorg.
You can go first.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you, Jenny, and thank you, Lisa, so much. And I'm so happy that you've grown 100%. So that's really wonderful. And thank you, Mr. Peely, for, for having Jenny join us. So this is much needed, and I really appreciate how precise you were and just write down with all the data that we need. And I agree with Counselor Sorg that we need an ordinance to make sure that it's, and this should be done ASAP. I mean, everything, it's like, everything you read, you know, when I get my little publications from the defenders or any kind of wildlife or whatever, it's like birds are dying off, wasps are dying off, the manatee is in danger. And that all has to do with the ocean, well, the manatee with the ocean and the heat. So imagine what's going on with our human organisms. There's something that's going to, that's in the process of going very wrong with us. So I appreciate all your efforts. And as far as that ordinance goes, I know that legal works on all of that. But would you, would the two of you, would your department be working closely with the city manager to assure that we have, we have in place, there'd be so many, so many sections in there in terms of the equity issue and working with other parts of the city that exist now, but the new developers as well, to make sure that those homes are setups to, and ready to go? So you would be working closely, and that's wonderful. And that was, that's really my only, besides thanking you very much for your work. I'm very appreciative. And just to assure that we have an ordinance that we can just put in place immediately. And it's true that the East Lomond Project is coming up, the West Industrial Park and all these others. Yeah. And, but the new construction on the city-owned and sponsored buildings are the ones we really have to work on, I think, hereforth. Because I think some of these plans already take into account everything that you've covered prospectively.
Mayor, Councilors, and Counselor Flores, one thing I do want to bring up is there are many model programs, ordinances that we can borrow from that are germane to our area. The one thing I want to be cognizant of is that community development is, is in the process of developing these ordinances as well. So how do we fit them in time-wise? I mean, I think that we can move forward with them. But I also want them to have the same vetting process. So I think that at a minimum, we can bring them forward and use them as exemplary models until we fit them in there. I, too, feel an extraordinary urgency. So I'm not at all contradicting what you're saying. I'm just trying to be aware of all the things that are going on in the city at the same time.
That's true. But thank you, Lisa, for highlighting that because it's true. There's just so many balls that are juggling here in the city and all these things that are urgent, 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 and rush, rush, and should have been done last year or two years ago. But this is something, I think that the science is showing us that the extremes are becoming more, are more polarized. And then we had that horrible coal snap that we'd never seen before in February. And those coal stamps are happening worldwide. And then, of course, the Arctic is, you know, is melting. So, and I guess I just feel that urgency, and I think you do too. But the reality is, how do we get the wheels really going on this? So thank you. And I think Mr. Nichols wants to speak to something, too. Oh, what he's working on, the ordinances that you're working on, Mr. Nichols? Is that what you're going to address?
Yes, Mayor, and City Council, Larry Nichols, Community Development for the record. Very intrigued about today's workshop and regarding energy use in buildings. I spend a lot of my time addressing buildings. We're discussing the, developing an ordinance versus a resolution. Ordinances are law, right? And so if we were to say we're going to develop this as an ordinance, then anybody that didn't comply with the new Energy Conservation Code, for example, would be violating the law. Our ordinances are sent down to us from Santa Fe. Our building codes, excuse me, our building codes are sent from Santa Fe. They call them the Mexico Building Code. And we are mandated to adopt those. So we probably would have to work with them in concert and developing an ordinance that you're, that you're speaking about. I am very much in favor of energy conservation, finding ways for our buildings to be more effective and less expense in operation. We do that now. When we adopted the International Energy Conservation Code a few months ago, we addressed several of the items that we were discussing here today. Uh, we addressed several of the items that we were discussing here today. It is true, there is not a provision in that code that talks about putting in electrical, uh, devices and increasing the size of the, uh, electrical panels to accommodate chargers for electric vehicles and putting in wiring that will be able to be utilized for, uh, solar, uh, implementation from the converters from direct current to alternating current, that type of thing. We had, um, about 600 permits for solar installation. But prior to the pandemic, it slowed down through the pandemic. It has now come back. We're doing about 45, uh, around 45 to 50 solar installations. They're primarily, primarily on existing properties, uh, in those conversions. So we are addressing the ideas, uh, that you're discussing here today through our, our current operation, through our current permitting. I'm, I'm just, uh, wanting, I guess, to, to have legal help to talk about, locally adopting a, a ordinance that you're proposing, knowing that we will probably have to, uh, coordinate it, uh, with the, with the state, Construction Industries Division.
Well, I'm sure, Mr. Nichols, that there are provisions in whatever the state has set down that would, uh, meet the, the, uh, or we would be able to comply or not go beyond that. Or I don't know, it all depends. Jennifer, do you know if those, um, are they standards that you get from Santa Fe, Larry? Or are they, um, must-dos or, or are, is it a law or? Because I'm just wondering if whatever we, uh, this, you know, something we would like to draft would be permissible under those, uh, you know, those guidelines or whatever it is that the state sends. I think we would, right? I don't know.
Mayor and Council, and please correct me if I'm incorrect, Larry. They are minimum statutory requirements.
Oh, okay. So if we can go by what the, what the state has done, and then we can surpass those. We can't do anything less than that, but we can surpass those. So, so that we do have a framework to work from, and then we have what we want to do. And I think that Senator Heinrich is absolutely correct. Las Cruces can be a real model and, um, for the rest of the cities in the United States, especially small cities, especially communities that are poor. We can thrive and, and we'll be a healthier city. Thank you, Mr. Nichols, and thank you, Lisa and Jenny, again. Thank you very much.
I will just comment, uh, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Flores, uh, Nichols for the record. That is true. The, uh, building codes are, uh, provided by the state, but they are part of the New Mexico Administrative Code through the Construction Industries Division. They cannot be, what we adopt here would cannot be, uh, less restrictive than, than what they provide there. But you're talking about something, uh, more, more restrictive.
We're talking about something more restrictive when we're asking for more compliance to be, um,
Yes.
Aware of what's good for us?
Yes.
Well, how do you like them apples?
Right now, we offer, uh, Counsel Flores and members of council, we offer options for buildings, for particularly, uh, residential properties. They have the opt, uh, option of being all-electric, all-electric in every sense of the word electrification, or they can opt to have a combination of electrical and gas. The, uh, one of the codes that's adopted right now that we would be taking off the record, so to speak, is the International Fuel Gas Code. And we would have to, I think, the state to, to, uh, join in this with, with that. I think you have a real, very positive, uh, impact on city-owned buildings. When we carry that to the, uh, home builders, the developers on commercial private properties, we'll have more of a, more of a challenge.
But wouldn't it be possible, Mr. Nichols, that Larry, if we had this on the books, that it would be, um, you know, it would be staggered insofar as compliance dates or? And I, I think you're talking about, uh, like a fair, a fairness to, to builders. And I, I agree with that. But, um, we could have an ordinance possibly that says that by date such and such, say by 2030, um, all builders must comply. I mean, I'm just saying optimally, that would be, um, the best way to go. I'm not saying that it would be the most effect, uh, whatever, realistic. But maybe it is realistic. But, um, perhaps we can have a, an ordinance that does stagger or does give by dates.
Yes.
I don't know. I, and it's just that, um, everybody has to be on notice that this is something we have to do. So that, that's, and, and I think that, and it has to be fair to everyone, of course. But, uh, we're thinking about our own lives and our children's lives. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Counselor, I think you're on the right direction on that. But Larry, if I may, so, you know, a lot of times costs drive things. And I know we had discussed here at council about, uh, an all-electric subdivision as well as all-electric, um, building permits to take priority. So I'm wondering if, well, one, where the status is on that. I guess there was going to have to be drafted a, some type of a ordinance on that. But I guess what I was trying to get at is, I wonder if we, in the, in the interim, was, was to raise the price of gas permits double, triple, so that it's like, oh, I'm going to pay that much now, I'll just go electric for now. It's, it, it will, it will accomplish a lot. Yeah, because a lot of times people, you know, they just want their house. And, and, and we're going to have to, it's going to have to be wired as such because of all the different things that people nowadays need, from their smartphones, or iPads, or computers, their electric cars. So it's probably, and then if you can get, excuse me, solar, then you can pretty much get your electric costs kind of pretty much eliminated. But one is that, that's the one question. The second thing is, when, years ago, we used to have a policy, a resolution, that we would not, believe it or not, that we would not go outside the city of Las Cruces for, uh, services such as trash and, and hook up to the sewer. If we had put that in an ordinance, we wouldn't have been able to do that with our friends in Doñana or the ones in Los Alturis. So when we have the, when we had the resolution, it still had to come back to city council, but it was a lot easier, gave us a little more flexibility if we had to in those rare instances. Now it's a, it's a common occurrence that we hook up people to our, our sewer system. So it's just something to think about, because once you put it on the ordinance, it's a little bit tougher. But, but I like what you're saying about phasing it out throughout the years to give notice. But I also think in the interim, you can also perhaps raise the price on that, whether it's a double or triple. Because if they say, hey, well, that's just too expensive, well, just go electric then. Well, I guess so then. You know, you see what I'm getting at? Counselor Sorg.
What kind of gas permit are we talking about here? I didn't know there was such a thing.
Oh, you have to, you have to, you have to have the, uh, you know, the gas meter, for one thing. Those are kind of expensive.
Do we, we don't charge for those?
Sure you do. Darn right you do. It's a lot, it's expensive.
Okay.
So, you know, I don't know. If you were to double the price on the gas meter.
Are you thinking, are you thinking that, of a impact fee?
No, no, just, uh, increase the cost of, of what, to install gas. So, I mean, it's just.
There's, there's a service fee on everybody's bill. Is that what you're talking about? No?
Okay, so years ago.
I'm not aware of any other.
Oh, yeah. I mean, years ago, I, I built a fourplex and, and, um, I wanted to, you know, have four different gas meters. And when they, this was a long time ago. And they told me the price, I said, forget that, I'll just do all-electric. And I did. And, and so if you even bumped up the price on the gas meter, just, you know, 50% more, what I'm trying to say is, the public doesn't like being told you have to do this. But if you do it in a way where they think, okay, well, you know what? It is kind of cost prohibitive, I'll just go ga, I'll just go electric. You're probably not going to have anyone who wants to do that. Except for Counselor Vasquez, so he can make his tortillas on the gas stove. You know, that's about it.
Okay. Okay. Well, I just wanted to make a few more points, um, uh, in this whole subject. To start with, natural gas has been a transitional energy source from coal and oil. And it's, it is a, uh, it does produce less carbon dioxide than coal and oil does. And so, um, it's been good for that. But it's time to plan to phase out natural gas too. An all-electric city can be cheaper to operate. Uh, we can get by with less money to operate an all-electric city than we can with a combination of electric and natural gas. And, um, this is the way it goes, though. When you have an appliance such as, say, a water heater that, um, starts leaking, that's what happened to mine here just a couple of years ago. You don't have a chance to, uh, convert to electric at, on the spur of the moment. So people are going to still need to have natural gas service to, to keep their appliances going on, on the houses that are already built. And another thing I, it's going to fit really well into this is community solar. We can have community solar help, uh, in paying for the, or energy source for an all-electric buildings. And, um, just to keep in mind, a house that doesn't have natural gas and is just a little bit safer than a house that has, is all-electric.
Can you repeat that? Can you repeat that, what you just said?
A, a house that it doesn't have natural gas is a little bit safer.
Oh, okay.
Safer. Did I say it the other way around? Sorry. Sorry about that. You are, yes, very good. And it's true, a Las Cruces can be a model for the country. As Senator Heinrich says, something to be proud about. Um, I have a question for our Public Works Department. I see David and Tony out here. Either one of you could answer this question perhaps. And it has to do with their East Mesa Recreational Park. And, um, my question is, uh, do we need gas, natural gas service to that park? Is there going to be any in, indoor buildings there? Of course, there's going to be, um, uh, restrooms there. Will they have to have natural gas?
Mayor and Council, Counselor Sorg, if I can answer the mayor's question.
Sure, sure.
Then I'll yield to Flores, Tony. Mayor, what I think you were discussing was, Nichols for the record. I think what you were discussing was a strategy to incentivize electrification. And I think that would, uh, be a very strong position. Uh, yes, we can do that through, uh, changing our fee stretch, fee schedule for homes, uh, for gas permits. Uh, we can incentivize, uh, maybe a lesser fee for all-electric electrification, uh, projects, that sort of thing. I think that would be a step in the right direction.
And then Delilah, maybe raise the price of the gas meter a little bit. And then I like what Counselor Flores said. I think by 2030, all-new construction, no more gas. But that, you know, work up, ramp up toward there. But in the meantime, I think you're going to see, if we start incentivizing builders to, to build all-electric, because it's going to be cheaper than, and then building gas. I mean, really, when you get right down to it and you, you, let's say you, you love this house that you want to have, and then they say, oh, you know what? It's all-electric, is that going to be a problem? No, I'm not going to buy it. Yeah, and they're not going to say that. They're going to buy it. And, you know, and then especially if it has solar on it, it could actually be cheaper. So that's, I think, the way to go, to incentivize it in the interim, until we build a little bit more, um, timeline as to get to the 2030, say, timeline of no, no new construction with, with gas. And that gives utilities also some breathing room to get their projects, whatever needs to be done, make sure that's done by 2030.
As long as we're on that topic, I don't think there's anything wrong by saying all-new buildings now or?
Well, city buildings, yes, I agree, we can do that. But we're talking about the public, you know, you've got, you know, different builders have to change their, their.
Well, yes, but does it take nine years? I'd say, I'd say build all-electric homes soon, and then shut the gas off in nine, 10 years. But they can have both gas and all-electric at the same time. That's okay.
And that's fine, but I think if you incentivize it, I think you're going to see they're going to be all-electric anyways. I mean, really, because right now, it's going to be a challenge. Interest rates are probably going to start going up. They're going to have to, the government's going to have to curb inflation, so they're going to start raising those rates. And so, and so I, I think it'd be a good time to start incentivizing to get the cost of construction a little bit cheaper.
We'll work on it. We'll get it right.
Well, are you, oh, wow, okay. So are you okay with Larry and looking at bringing something back to council as far as how they can incentivize?
I want him to. I'm not just okay, I want him to.
I don't know if you need to bring that back. Do we set your rates, or do you usually do that yourself? I, I can't remember that.
Mayor and Council, Larry Nichols for the record. Uh, we adopted the fee schedule, uh, I think this last year. So it would be a matter of us bringing back the fee schedule to council to approve an amendment to, uh, to adjust those fees for those various topics, gas service, electric service.
Is that okay with you, if he works on that, brings it back for us to look at?
Please do, yes.
Okay. Next week and, uh, and don't forget the subdivision too, the all-electric subdivision.
But let Tony finish first, and then I got to ask Larry something.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Sorg, this is Tony Trivino for the record. At this point in time, at the East Mesa Sports Complex, we do have the gas infrastructure being installed along the roadway.
It's already there.
It's not going to be there, but we do have it installed just so we are prepared for the next phase of the, of the complex. Also, right next to it is Sonoma Springs Boulevard, which is a major collector that connects Sonoma Ranch Boulevard to the east, to Mesa Grande, that will have the gas already installed there. So all the gas infrastructure, the mains will be installed with the project.
Okay, but we don't have to use it.
We don't, sir, no.
There we go. Okay, that's what I was wondering. Thank you. But getting back to resolutions and, uh, ordinances, can we have a resolution that says all new city buildings must be electric and not natural gas? Let's work on that, can we? All right? And then, on, on, on as far as other buildings, the private buildings and so forth, we, Larry, this is a question I have for you. We must have a minimum code for the electric service for each building or house. We'll say, just say house for now. A minimum size service, I mean.
Yes. Uh, Mayor, Counselor Sorg, and Nichols for the record. The, um, size of the service panel, how many amperes, whether it's 120 or 200, most of them are 200 amps now. Uh, that's established by the, uh, how many outlets and branch circuits?
I know.
And that sort of thing. So, uh, that's what determines the, the, uh, service panel size.
I know.
But if you were to say, uh, we wanted to accommodate the design for the, for the building itself, now we want to, uh, put in additional, um, service availability, service panel availability for future connections to solar panels, to electrical vehicle charging stations, that sort of thing, then the, the panel will have to be larger, yeah.
No, my question is that, our standards right now, is there a minimum?
Yes, there is.
Do you know what it is off the top of your head?
Yeah, I, I believe it's, well, it's changed slightly, but it's around 100 amps.
Just 100. Can't we, as a city, say, let's start with 200 and have a 200 minimum?
Mayor and Counselor Sorg, uh, most everybody now in the homes that we're building and, and the commercial buildings, of course. Commercial is different because
Yeah.
They have different types of equipment. But most of the residential properties being built now are at 200-amp panels simply because of all the electrical devices that people are using. So that's, that's the, that's the preferred size panel at the moment.
Yeah, I know, I know that, but that doesn't answer my question. Can we say in an ordinance that the minimum size has to be, say, 200 amps?
Yes, yes.
Okay. That's, that's what I'm getting after here. Not only that, but, uh, ultimately, maybe not today, but ultimately have it so that the house is wired for electric, well, enough for all-electric house. And, and that depends on the size of the house, I know. And that depends on the size of the house, I know.
Yes.
A bigger house is going to have to have more service, a higher amperage, but eventually it'll have to be enough for a total electric house. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then last but not least, one more comment I wanted to make. As you know, in the West here, we're in a severe drought. California and Oregon are all burning up, whereas in the east, from Texas on to New England, they're drowning in floods. Someday, the day will come, when we have our, when our pipelines that go, that takes natural gas and oil from east to west, and west to east, are going to be filled with water, pumping it all to the west, so that we're going to get our water from the east on these pipelines, because we're not going to use natural gas, and we're not going to use oil so much. Just watch, that day will come someday. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Counselor. So Larry, let me ask you something, kind of a twist to what Counselor Sorg was asking, would it be better if, in the future, upcoming year or two, that houses are required, new construction, new construction, are required to have the outlet for the electric cars and a few of these other things that probably are going to be necessary? Because if you, if we just say it needs to have a higher amperage, they may just build, they may just do that and not put the plug in for the electric vehicles, because I think it's important that, if they have the plug in for the electric vehicles, it sends a message every day that they see it, like, I wonder what these electric vehicles are about, maybe I should just get one, and...
Yeah, Mayor, that's exactly what I'm saying.
Well, I know, but you said it the other way, and then so, and that's why I was wondering, if we changed it a little bit, and by doing that, then, you know, it's, they're not caught off guard, and they don't have to go back and, they'd hate, I'd hate for them to have a brand-new home two, three years from now, and they, you know, they're so excited, they forget to ask about, I'm sure they would, but they would, they forget to ask about the charging of their car, and they're going to call up the city and say, well, how come you guys don't require that?
Mm-hmm.
And that's only, that's why I thought that we could tweak it a little bit, instead of the amperage, but then you guys are going to say, at your office, you're going to say, you need to have this type of a amperage to run this.
That's, that's what I was saying, all-electric, total electric, has all that.
Yeah, I know, but if we put those little things in, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, it's just a little bit different way of approaching it, and I think accomplished is the same thing. Oh, really, it does, I mean, I'm just telling you, people, look at the mask, people don't like to tell them they were a mask, they want to do it themselves.
Okay, okay.
And Mayor and Counselor Sorg, Larry Nichols, again, you know, National Electric Code is really the code we use primarily for deciding the service size and capacity, and so that's going to come into play, more than say, we establish, okay, you have to have this size of electrical service panel at a certain amperage rating, we're probably going to have to say something like, they have to be designed to incorporate these features that you're wanting, and then the electric code will say, it has to be this size of panel to accommodate that design.
There you go. Yeah, okay.
Mr. Mayor, the many houses I have wired, we always talked about code. Do I have to do this by the code, or do I have to do that by the code? It's a constant thing that electricians always do.
Mayor, Counselor Sorg, I wanted to let you know that the International Energy Conservation Code for 2021, which is the newest one, we have 2028, has all those things that you described, that it has the elements of having, being EV-ready, solar-ready, and having that additional space. So it's, it's not, it's not like the future, it's now, to have, to have that, so it's...
Okay, sounds good. Was there anything more for your presentation?
No, the one thing I'd like to close with on this is that our presentation, and this slide in particular, really is about the low and moderate income communities, there is, there are, the transition is happening, and the incentives that are coming forward for the general public are going to be here in the next year or so, but my biggest concern, our biggest concern is the, is providing the resilience that we need for the low-income community. So, you know, these, these rebates are ones that we need to seize and capitalize on to make a big difference in our community, and that's where our focus is. I mean, clearly, we'll do whatever's directed, but that was the point of this.
Lisa, did I perhaps overlook it, or did you have an update as far as the franchise fee from Passer Electric? The, right now, we're currently at 2%, and I think we had discussed this at council, to go to 3% with that 1% to be used for lower-income people to help, to help retrofit their homes for better energy efficiency. Have you, I mean, didn't we kind of talk about this a few months ago?
Mayor and council, I know, I have heard you discuss it before, I know that our franchise agreement is, is, needs to be renewed. I believe that it's up to the council to decide how the franchise fee should be structured and how it should, what the funding should be used for.
I was just of the impression that we had pretty much agreed that we would go from 2% to 3%, and that 1% would be used specifically to help weatherize, and, because we used to get those funding, money from CDBG, and I think that all dried up. And so if we can help some of our neighbors in certain parts of the, of the community, we, that 1% to us would be, you know, to other, most people, I mean, overall, it's like $5, but to them, it's going to save them $30, $35 a month on their energy costs, so that's a, that's a nice return. And so, you know, okay, well, if you don't have it, Efo, when do you think we're going to get that?
Mayor and council, so, Mayor, we are working with Passer Electric, and that isn't something Lisa was involved in, as far as getting the franchise agreement drafted, that what we will be using that franchise fee for will certainly include Lisa on that, but at this point, we're just working with Passer Electric, we should, they've sent us a draft, and this is something that we're, we'll be working with legal, and they're legal to figure out, but at a point when we have that draft with them, I think from a Passer Electric's perspective, they have no, they don't, I don't think they have, would have a problem with what we spend that extra revenue on, but as soon as, as soon as that's drafted, we'll include Lisa on the language to implement that.
Okay, Efo, and just if I may, and we'll see if my colleagues here support this, I don't really like increasing franchise fees at all, but I'm willing to do this for this specific reason, to help those that are, aren't able to do this on their own or through our help because of the CDBG going away, but I would like to keep that fund in a separate fund, so we can monitor it, and it be used only for, for the intended purposes, because I don't want, because I've seen this years ago, I'm not saying it would happen under your administration, where we'll do something and somehow that money gets used for other stuff, all legitimate, but I don't want to increase that franchise fee and it not be used for its intended purpose, you know, like Counselor Flores's new furniture for her office, or something like that.
Sorry.
Okay, is that, you guys good?
That's right, that's good.
Okay, did you, do you want to say something?
Well, I'd just like to hear from staff, from the city manager, if we can expect a resolution on electrification of all city buildings in the next meeting or two that we have, one or two meetings from now.
Yes, sir, we'll work with staff to get that done.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, was there, any members of the public here want to talk about this? I guess not. Okay, if there's nothing further, I guess that's it, so, maintain motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second by Flores.
Motion made by Counselor Sorg, second by Counselor Flores, that we adjourn, Christine?
This is on the motion to adjourn the work session, Counselor Beto Stewie?
Yes.
Counselor Vazquez is absent, Counselor Bencomo?
Yes.
Counselor Sorg?
Yes.
Counselor Flores?
Yes.
Counselor Ganderda?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Okay, we're adjourned, it's 3:40 PM, so have a good evening. Okay. Okay, so this is the agenda-setting meeting for the September 20th, 2021 City Council meeting, number one, consent?
One consent.
Two consent?
Two consent.
Three, non-consent?
Three, non-consent.
Four, non-consent?
Four, non-consent.
Five, non-consent?
Five, non-consent.
Six, non-consent?
Six, non-consent.
Seven, consent?
Seven, consent.
And eight, consent?
Eight, consent.